Good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, April 25th, and we are calling the meeting to order. It is 7:05 and if everyone can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the open meeting session that the Verona Board of Education passed a resolution at its annual reorganization meeting held on January 3rd, 2023. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right, the public, to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which in any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Verona Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the Star Ledger, posted with the Township of Verona and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this meeting set forth, the time, location, and the agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education Office and the Verona Public Schools District website. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public via the Board of Education website. Mr. Cruz, if you could call attendance, please.
Sure, Ms. Walker. Mrs. Frazal.
Present.
Mrs. Farrar.
Present.
Mrs. Prisco.
Here.
Mrs. Freshy.
Here.
We have Quorum, thank you.
Thank you. And tonight, we have a presentation, we have two presentations. First up, I would like to call up Mrs. Pomerizzi, our Athletic Director. She's here tonight to do winter sports wrap-up. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm going to do a recap of our winter sports. And we have some very important guests with us tonight who, if not all of them, just came from a track meet at Caldwell. So they ran here to be with us along with their coach, Coach Leparati, who, you know, all day coaching and then comes here tonight. Truly shows the dedication and love that all of you have for the sport. So, thank you. All right, we're going to start with wrestling. Wrestling this season, our wrestling team finished the season with a 9-15 overall record. Competing in the SCC Liberty Division, the team was 2-4 with wins over powerhouses Milburn and Montclair. The team finished 12th at the Essex County Tournament. And individually, the team had 30, two wrestlers with 30-plus wins on the season and two others with 20-plus wins. There were two region qualifiers, each won their first match, finishing at the RWB1 level for the season. The team participated in two JV tournaments as well during the course of the season. Jake Ferry and Joel Gonzalez received first team. Jesse Wagner, John Stockelberg, second team. Charlie Fidel and Joey Valone were honorable mention. Our boys' basketball team finished the season with a record of 9-17. There are many highlights this season, including clinching the playoffs for the 15th consecutive year. The team was led by four seniors and five juniors, who all saw varsity minutes. Big wins on the year included wins over Belleville and Glenridge twice, winning on the road at Stabaz and sweeping two games against our rival Cedar Grove. The team was competitive all season, losing six games by eight points or less while participating in the Colonial Division of the Super Essex Conference. In the state tournament as the 12th seed, the boys hoops traveled to Jersey City in the first round against McNair Academy. The team had two players receive all-conference accolades with Alex Rodriguez as first team and Cole McLean as honorable mention. Our junior varsity team was also successful, competing in the same conference and finishing with a record of 12-11. Our freshman team had a very busy and competitive season, finishing just shy of 500. Our boys' annual fundraiser shoot-a-thon was a huge success, raising almost $6,000 to be divided among our program and for our local youth in need. Our boys and girls swim team ended the season by sending five qualifying girls and two qualifying boys to the SEC ECADA Swimming Championship Meet. On the girls' side, Sophia Bubuf set a new record in the 100 freestyle event, beating her own personal record. Sophia was also honorable mention, all SCC. Julia Caminos, Dionysia Yaniotis, and Kaya Gomushaka received SCC all-conference honors. Verona Glenridge Ice Hockey Team had a tremendous year, competing in the toughest public school division in the state. They had a 10-10-3 record for the season, but playing one of the toughest schedules. They made an incredible run to the state semifinals for the second year, beating High Point, Howell, and Morris Knowles, losing to eventual state champion Governor Livingston in the state semis. In the final rankings, they were fifth in their conference, third in Public C, 26th in the state, and 14th out of all the public schools. And, most importantly, for the third time in the past five years, they won the team best sportsmanship award for their division. Our girls' basketball team had an overall record of 20-7, a conference record of 11-3 in the SCC Colonial Division. They had a very successful season and were competitive every game. The girls made it to the quarterfinals of the NJSIAA North 2 Group 2 State Sectional Tournament. The JV girls' basketball team had a successful season as well, finishing the season 10-7. First-team all-conference went to Emily Baumgart and Sabine Mata. Second-team all-conference was Cali Giacamazzo. And all-conference honorable mention was Brooke Reinaker. Our boys' track and field team, Ian Zaluski, are they even back yet? They might be still in Caldwell because two of our runners could have been here, couldn't come. Ian Zaluski received first place in all of his events at the SCC Championship Meet, the 1600, 3200, and 800. His 30 points helped Verona hold down second place at the SCCs, with Anthony Lewis also getting nine points for first place in high jump and Chris Sluck gaining a point for getting sixth in the 3200. Ian Zaluski was our North 2 Group 1 State Sectional Champion in the 1600 and placed second in the 800 and third in the 3200. Anthony Lewis was also the North 2 Group 1 State Sectional Champion in high jump. As a team, the boys placed fourth overall at state sectionals, with Jack Damaris helping earn the team points in high jump. And Anthony Lewis also added to the team's score for placing sixth in the 55-meter dash. And finally, our girls' winter track and field team. Our girls took second place at the SCC Small School Relay Conference Championship. They were the top small school at the Essex County Relays. They were the North 2 Group 1 State Sectional Champions, which we're honoring them for that tonight. And at the state sectionals, the girls took first place by 35 points. Freshman Gwen Neely was the North 2 Group 1 State Sectional Champion in the 800 meters. So if anyone knows track and field, the 800 is a grueling event. And she's a freshman, so it's very impressive. The girls had group championship qualifiers in nine different events. Coach, you want to come up, help hand out these? He doesn't want to, but I'm making him.
I just ride on the bus, you know, I go to Tom's River and I'm back, okay.
Eleanor Battersby.
Stay over here.
Kara Anne Damaris. She's still high-jumping in Caldwell. Kara Dumphy. Sarah Griffin. She's lost her track uniform.
Yeah, she just came from the meet.
Shay Hagerty. Sarah Nodick. Sarah Lewis.
Lana Sarris.
Gwen Neal. For both the 800 meters, state sectional champion, and for the team, state sectional champion. Malle O'Neill. Megan Nguyen. And Marguerite Valera, who pole vaulted over here today. Congratulations again to our North 2 Group 1 State Sectional indoor track champions. So proud of you ladies. And then let Coach U get in.
Well, there's no bus driver here, so.
Let's go.
And someone's moving out. Just relax, girls.
Congratulations again to all our winter student athletes.
Yes, congratulations, girls. Very well-deserving, all of you. Congratulations. And great job, Coach. Thank you all for coming out. And thank you, Mrs. Pomerizzi. Moving on with our agenda, we will go to our public hearing of the public schools' budget for 2023-2024 with Mr. Jorge Cruz. Mr. Cruz.
Thank you. Let me share my screen. All right, good evening, everyone. This is pretty similar to the last, the tentative budget that I presented last month. So technically, this is our official public hearing. Just to give you guys a recap of the process. So last month, we adopted our tentative budget that was submitted to the county superintendent. That was approved on March 29th. And now, this is officially the public hearing for the adoption of the budget. From the time that we submitted this budget till to now, it hasn't changed. There is one additional slide in here that Superintendent Disziusseppi is going to touch on, which is going to highlight all the new offerings that this budget will be bringing to our district. So here's the timeline that, basically, how the budget process gets started. It started back in December, where we engaged with our administrative team to submit their, identifying their needs, and then it gets reviewed by the superintendent and myself. And then we just continue working with the Finance Committee and making different reiterations and also waiting for state aid, et cetera. So now, that whole long journey, we're finally here. And it's April 25th, and it's now the time to adopt this final budget. Our mission statement, which, as you all know, we're in the process of strategic planning, where this most likely will be updated this coming year, for the new school year. Budgetary goals, I'm not going to spend too much on it, just to highlight. Our key is, the key goal is really to continue maintaining class sizes, which is in line with our policy. Also, ensuring that we continue enhancing our programs, especially around special education, gen ed, special ed, and the arts and athletics. In addition to that, also amplifying our professional development and continue developing our staff. So I'll turn it over to Superintendent Disziusseppi.
Thank you. We are looking to add some staff for next year, some due to enrollment and some due to program creation. So we need an elementary school and high school special education teacher that has to do with program changes. Kindergarten teacher at Forest has to do with increased enrollment in that building. We are moving our part-time nurses to full-time, because that's a program change, recognizing that we have fragile students with health concerns. And while our part-time nurses are phenomenal, I will say I'm very, very impressed with all the nurses in the district. It will be beneficial to have a full-time nurse in each building, and our part-time nurses will stay on to help with field trips and do subbing, et cetera. We are offering a part-time gifted and talented teacher at the elementary schools to start with, and hopefully, over, we can grow that time to ultimately be full-time as we move forward. And the life skills program at the high school, which we've been talking about, Mrs. Simmons presented. So between, and in addition here, there'll be some other tweaks, but we're also probably going to need a full-time art teacher at the high school. We had a tremendous enrollment, which really has to do with what I've spoken to you about in the past with regard to not having a sufficient number of teachers and to offer electives. And therefore, the bulk of the electives that we offer are in the art department. And we actually have enough sections next year, full sections, to have four full-time art teachers plus one with a sixth-period stipend. And those are not running with 12 students, and then they're running with 25 and 28. So they're big classes. So we're looking to, we actually offered what we thought were going to be really exciting music options to take some of the heat off of the art department and bring it into the music department. And we did not get the enrollment that we had hoped, unfortunately. So we are going to go out with a full-time art teacher as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So here, this slide also has not changed. This is the increase in revenues for 23-24. This slide, actually, you can see the 2% increase in tax levy. It amounts to 732,828. The health adjustment, this is basically the adjustment that's allowed by the state. Base are an increase on health costs. So we're increasing our renewals for medical benefits came in at 8.96%. So it was a significant increase. It was almost half a million dollars. It's something that is very detrimental to our overall budget. So taking on and being able to actually have this health adjustment definitely helps the district continue providing service and not cutting programs. Also, as a state aid, we did get an increase of, on the special ed side, of 337,454. So the total increase in revenues for 23-24 is 1,341,495. This slide, I'm not going to touch too much on, because it's a repeat again. It's a comparison, the last three years. And then the last two columns shows the one-year, year-over-year change and a percentage. So you can see the tax levy comparison. Bank cap or the health adjustment. Last year, we had a bank cap that we took advantage of at that time. And this year is the healthcare, health benefit adjustment, followed by the state aid, tuition revenue, miscellaneous and interest revenue. As I stated last month, the huge increase here is the interest revenue. Previously, we weren't receiving much. We went out, we did an RFP, and right now, we're going to be generating over 100,000 in just interest alone. And prior to that, we were only generating about 5,000 a year. The budget fund balance, here you see that the increase in our fund balance as well. Three years ago, we only had 89,000 coming in from our fund balance. And the last two years, we've been bringing over to feed our budget from excess surplus that ends in, after our annual audit, we've been bringing in over 900,000 into the budget to support our growth in services. What, I actually missed, let me just go back and, withdrawals from maintenance reserves, there's no withdrawals. So that's where that line is, where's the zeros? And then on the last column, you see the totals, which totals the total revenues for each year. And as I mentioned before, the changes on the last two columns. Here's a pie chart with the breakdown of our total expenditures. Our largest expenditures being generated instruction, followed by benefits with 15%, and then specialized, which accounts 9.4%. And then there's actually the smaller breakdowns and the other categories, as you see here. This one is probably a little harder to see, but with the recording, and I'm also going to be posting this presentation on our website as a PDF. So you'll be able to take a copy of that. Hopefully tomorrow, it'll be on our website. And this basically breaks down the dollar total per category that was shown on the other slide. Expenditure comparison, this, we see here the three-year comparison and the one-year change percentage. And breaking down our largest cost, which is half of our budget in salaries, followed by benefits, special education, general ed, general services and instruction, and also the general supports. So basically, the general services, this is regular classrooms, co-curricular, athletics. It's in this category. And general services, basically, it's professional development, curriculum, writing, supplies, leases, et cetera. So all those accounts that supports instruction are coming up this count. Turn it over to Superintendent Disziusseppi.
Thank you. So the curricular initiatives that we have are similar to what they've been over the past several years, continuing with our focus on phonics and reading, which uses foundations as our phonemic, foundations integrity as a phonemic program. Acadians is a program we use to assess student reading levels. We use a modified reading workshop approach, but really a balanced literacy overall approach. And we're working with our principal's humanity supervisor and the director, as well as outside trainers from Gravity Goldberg, that's been with the district for quite a while. Ms. Clark, I think, has been with us maybe five or six years now. So she's well-known to our teachers and knows our district. We are continuing to support the Singapore Math Program, and that has expanded from dimensions math in the kindergarten through grade five up into, I just lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. Amplify, thank you, I couldn't think. Amplify Math, that goes now up into the high school. So Amplify Math started in grade six through eight. We now have continued it into Algebra 1 and Algebra 2 at the high school level. And that program has done really well with our teachers and our students, specifically at the middle and high school levels. We are continuing with an inquiry-based science program and curriculum using Smithsonian's kits for our lower grades and our middle school and the high schools, and more of a traditional science program. We are continuing to grow professional learning communities. This was the first year that we started that, specifically at the high school. I would like to bring that to our elementary group as well. Professional learning communities are difficult to work in, but they're extremely responsive to the needs of our district. So building that will take several years, but hopefully, we will get there and tap the expertise that we have right here at home to improve and move our student outcomes. And we are writing curriculum this summer in, across the board, we're writing. And I'll let the Education Committee is going to report on the curriculum that we're writing this summer. So I'm trying to move this, I don't have control over it. At the high school, we are also working on improving our writing, specifically in the narrative writing area, and looking at selective English courses. We're not adopting anything for the 23-24 school year with regard to the selectives. And that was something Mrs. Peter put together and surveyed the students as to what electives they would like, but they wouldn't really be electives because they would replace our English 1, 2, 3, and 4. So they would be selective, but not elective. So we'll be looking to do that in '24, '25. Continuing to focus on inquiry-based learning across all of our content areas. And as I said, using Amplified Geometry and Algebra 1 and 2. Thank you. Special Services, I think we're seeing the most growth probably in special services as Mrs. Simmons gets a foothold in understanding the great work that's been done here and what needs to be changed. And one of the reasons we hired Mrs. Simmons is that she has a track record of changing program and implementing new program. That's been very successful in her prior districts. So we are looking to add in greater supports in our elementary special education program. Specifically, I think we actually will have some in-class support next year for the first time, I think, ever in Verona. That we have, for those that don't know what in-class support is, it's co-teaching. So you would have a classroom that would have a general education teacher and a special education teacher that would work together collaboratively to deliver instruction to all the students in that room, supporting our struggling learners and our skill-sensitive kids as well. But I can tell you, you know, that a good co-teaching matchup benefits all kids, general and specialized. And we talked several times about our LLD program that we're implementing at the high school, and everyone's very excited about that as well. The other services that is changing that we've also talked with the board about is the changeover from Effective School Solutions to Care+ New Jersey, which will service almost 30 students more across our district with mental health services.
Okay, so here we have the famous comparison chart. So Verona, we have it highlighted at the bottom. So here's our comp districts throughout Essex, Bergen. And I think there might be some Morris also, and Mawa or Union. Maybe it's that, and then it's also New Providence, I think, is that part of Union? Yeah. So here, we see that as far as a budgetary per pupil cost, it's probably one of the lowest in our comp, in this comp comparison. School supplies is probably average in the middle there. There's, but still, and then also the extracurricular, we're pretty, pretty, I would say, competitive in that sense. So at the end, and then on top of that also, like the property. So at the end, and and then on top of that also, like the property taxes, what you could actually see comparing to other districts where we are. That that's one thing that you'll kind of continue seeing all these other districts there. Per pupil cost is a lot higher. And we we probably will be inching up. I'm not sure how much of a gain in our people cost of an increase, but um a lot of that will probably you'll probably see that will probably be around sixteen seventeen the next two years. And the the last thing before I switch over, this data is from twenty twenty two. So twenty twenty three is is going to be computed probably like in the fall. So we'll probably have that from the state in the fall, and then we'll be able to report that out next year. Tax levy increase. There is just one small change in the debt service amount. There was a thousand, a thousand, six hundred and fifty seven dollars that was available in our fund balance in debt service. So it's only a thousand, six hundred dollars. So we're actually task taxing a little less on the debt service side because of it. So that was one change that you'll see here compared to the previous presentation. But at the end, the total tax levy. The total tax tax levy is forty one dot forty one million, four sixty two, three, three fifty. So that's the general fund on the general operating fund of thirty seven million plus the three point eight million on debt service. And and just to clarify, that service is the bonds that we take, we have taken from prior referendums. And a portion of that is covered by the state. And then the other this portion is actually now covered by the town. So the state provides their their portion, which is about a million and change. And and then the township, the town residents covered this this other portion for debt service for those referendums and capital improvements. So here we see the the total estimated impact on homeowners. One of the the errors in the previous presentation is that the the ratables was actually a lot higher. What we use is the November two thousand twenty two ratables. So in the previous presentation, there was a error in the amount. So this is actually the correct amount of the ratables. For twenty twenty three, there it is going to increase based on my conversation from the township. I believe they have it as two point three nine million. Or I'm sorry, two billion, three hundred and ninety million and and change is what the township has currently. But the what the state uses is the October two thousand twenty two number, which is this number, which is two billion, three eighty eight. So that's the total ratable value that we're using for two thousand twenty three, twenty four. The total tax levy, as I stated from the previous slide, is forty one million, four six two, three fifty. The rate is that point seventeen. What that means is for every one hundred dollars, there is a dollar seventy three that that's being taxed. So the average home here in Verona is three of four hundred thirty three thousand. What that what that means, the annual tax, school tax on that home is seven thousand, five sixteen. From this current school year to next school year, that's an increase of two fifteen seventy. So this is just a summary of the previous slide. And the last bullet is is basically really describing that percentage of what that percent means. That point zero seven three, it equates to a tax rate of one hundred dollars of assessment value as being a dollar seventy three. Questions?
I have two questions. The first is this kind of will touch upon the B and G report, but you would express to us that, you know, the custodians seem to be getting a little overworked. And that the district was up about seventy thousand dollars in overtime costs for custodial.
Yes.
I know you that you want to do an assessment of that as long as a couple of things. But if if we're up seventy thousand from one year, this year to the last year to this year, why not consider hiring one now in this budget? So because that because custodians, even if they're on the family medical plan, we still might be breaking the breakage going our way on that.
Right. So so yes, so I and I just wanted to offer a little context of what Mr. Walker is referring to. So in buildings and grounds, this year, we did have a substantial increase in overtime. It has to do a lot with building coverage. So we did have two employees that were were out on workers' compensation, and we needed to provide coverage into school buildings, which that in addition to coverages, also providing. I just feel that coming post COVID, we've been providing more rec. So then I a lot of what we anticipated was based off of last year. And now that a lot of all these activities are getting upstarted and and we're becoming more active, more involved, we've seen a lot of that these overtime and this cost increase. So I'm I'm with you one hundred percent. I think the the it's an easy, it's an easy thing to say, let's just hire and and get an additional body in there. Think one one thing before I I want to commit to an additional personnel for for the department. I definitely want to see if there's there's an opportunity of really looking at all the avenues, whether it's actually part time employees to to be able to be flexible. One of the challenges with that is that the consistency or the commitment, the longevity of part time employees in that in that arena. Sometimes it's not, it's not really sustainable, but it is the the most cost effective. Or even looking at if it's really about cleaning, looking at even having an outsourced service to provide cleaning services to to supply that need and just seeing and weighing that out and seeing like a comparison of of what's the best cost.
Yeah, because I I do appreciate the effort to, you know, study this, the the problem and then see what we need. And I certainly don't speak for the board, but I do think that we'd all agree that, you know, in your best professional judgment, you know, in order to keep all of our buildings clean and safe for the kids. If you told us you needed a new another custodian, I think, you know, it's likely this board would look favorably upon that, just, you know, because that's something we really care about. And as well as making the place look nice, that's important as well.
Right.
So you know, I think your budget's really, really good. I know you did a lot of work on this, and it's really easy to understand, which is awesome as well. But if you if you needed to put another custodian in just to keep everything, you know, where it should be, I would be in support of that.
I appreciate that. And then the the one action item that's on the agenda for that study, which is up to that five thousand dollar fee. It's not just the it. So one component is the is basically a time study of what Verona really needs. It, you know, how many based on the square footage? And and we already know this, we already know the square footage and and the amount of, you know, one one custodian per. It could be twenty thousand square foot. But then there's actually certain variables that probably are actually getting quantified in there because of it's a let's say, for example, it's cafeteria is part of that, then it definitely takes a lot more time. Or or let's say there's actually a room that the preschool at the at the at Lanning, that one, they actually need to sanitize a little more, especially if they're getting reports that, hey, these little ones are constantly getting sick. It that you need to actually put a little more care in there. And then so so having that time study to kind of like taking all those variables and then being able to then say, okay, you know what, this building needs X number to be able and then really have a standard of where we want our building. So right now, we're we're basically doing kind of like what the requirement is. But and and I commend Mr. Buglari, who's actually our new director of facilities. He's really, he's really actually in online and and looking at bringing and raising the bar and the standard. And I think a year from now, we're going to see the fruits of that. We're going to see the impact of having better products, better sanitizing. Right now, one of the things that that we're looking at is possibly switching our vendor that provides these janitorial supplies. Just because the 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 quality that we have right now is not the best. So we're trying to like, keep it, you know, reduce costs. But then also, even if it's costing us the same, but provide better product, provide better service, provide something that we will definitely take pride in and and really enjoy the school buildings. You know, when students actually come in and they actually see a clean bathroom every morning, that's important. And and that's what we want to see. We want to continue raising the bar on that.
The answer was was awesome. Thank you. Then one other thing was stunning to me for our superintendent. Like, I couldn't believe when I heard this. Is it true? It had no PLC structure ever in Verona school systems?
Not currently. Mr. Cogdill implemented it this year for the first time with the high school teachers. And we, you know, I talked about it when I say implemented it. He has one meeting a month. I mean, that's all they get. So it wasn't a lot of preparation for the teachers. So the teachers were a little kind of like flying by the seat of their pants. We're going to do some more work next year. We're thinking creatively to try to get more time that the principals can have with their teachers to do professional development workshop kind of approach. So yes, that the answer would be we don't do professional learning communities.
Yeah, it's it's not your fault. You're you're new here. I'm glad you you discovered that, but that's that's shocking. Again, that's crazy, crazy shocking. But, you know, thank you, Jorge, for the budget.
You know, it is and it isn't. And I'm just going to point something out that we didn't present in the budget, but it came to our attention as we were looking at coverage and in building coverage and costs for that. So it was close to sixty thousand dollars. So we we see that we were spending sixty thousand dollars this year. It's April on class coverage because of lack of two things, lack of substitute teachers. But more than that, we still have seven paraprofessionals that we have not been able to hire since September. So partly, I think the reason that you don't have structures like professional learning communities is that you never have time to get people to work together. And when you don't have, when people are constantly covering classes, it's very difficult then to say, oh, make time for that PLC. So part of it, yes, is could be any number of reasons why it wasn't here. But the other piece is it's it's difficult. And I just at this point want to, you know, give Mr. Kuz a shout out because this is my eleventh year as a superintendent, this is my eleventh budget, and I've never experienced a budget that's as hard as this district's budget is to do. And and he thinks out of the box. He comes with with creative ideas to save money. The example of of the interest and the revenue that we generated from the interest, this the work that you did last year with the Xerox or the photocopy machines. It's just a constant thought machine coming like, how can we do this better? How can we do it more efficiently? And it's such a pleasure to to work with someone who's always trying to think out of the box.
We interviewed for you. You told us that you were the superintendent at the school that had the biggest state aid reduction. So I'm sure that was all to a very difficult.
It's not as hard as this. You saw Kinalan's per pupil cost.
But I agree on all points concerning Jorge. And then possibly for the two board members on the ed committee, like the year long PD plan, that could be something that we look to maybe, you know, advocate to get some kind of PLC or and with the age of Google and Meets and Google Docs and Zoom, now you don't have to be the same place sometimes. So I think there's more options that we would have had in the past. So I think that's understandable as well, but I find both answers satisfactory. So thank you.
I don't have, I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you because Jorge, first of all, thank you for that budget. It was so clean and clear and easy to understand, so I appreciate that. And then also, thank you to Miss Giuseppe and to Miss Simmons, who I know isn't here. But seeing what you've done in a year, the opportunities that you've recognized and the the way in which the quickness that we're moving. Education tends to move at a glacial speed. So the fact that we're seeing so many programs like the Life Skills Program, push in programs at the elementary level, the exploration of GMT, when we when we talk about meeting the needs of all students, this is the number one way to start doing that. And then on top of that, to hear that we're going to have those PLCs, I agree that professional development is just follows right in line with that. So I mean, truly, I cannot thank you enough.
Just to piggyback a little bit on Diana. I was thrilled that we're going to be able to do the in-class support model for the elementary. That that has been an ask since before Dr. Mariella, going back to Libby, if anyone remembers Libby. I remember asking about that when my kid was that big and now she's that big. So I I think that that is going to be a real life changer for some kids because it keeps them in their least restrictive environment, which is where we really need to for our kids to be. So that that is a great addition.
Just to be clear, it's not going to be at every grade in the first year. So we are starting, you know, adding where we can. But it's my hope to eventually have in-class support at every grade level that has students that are classified as needing potentially resource center that is a more restrictive environment. Those kids that we can keep in the general education classroom. When we look at the test scores earlier in the year, we saw those tall red lines right among our special ed students that are not approaching grade level expectations on the state test scores, but way down in the one area. And no one wants to see that. But part of the reason is that we're not exposing many of our kids to grade level standards. And they're not going to get that in a resource center, right? They're going to get they'll get some, but they'll get more in the general education classroom. So that's a goal of mine. And the other goal of mine is to get remediation courses for our general education students that are also struggling learners for whatever reason, whether it's pandemic, whether it's reading lag. It it doesn't matter what the cause of it is. We know we have students that are struggling readers. We know we have students that are struggling learners in other areas. And we don't have the resources now to provide tier two and tier three interventions. And that's so my next goal next year is to try to find the money and the support to bring in interventions based on a model that other states have had for years that we don't have here either. And I I go back to saying it's the budget here. It's it's money. It's about money. And we can creatively make decisions where we can find money that we can invest that money in areas that are going to most benefit our students. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, I echo everyone's comments up here. I say this all the time, Jorge, thank you, Mr. Cruz, thank you for everything. And Mrs. Giuseppe, thank you for all you've done to bring all all the everything that you're bringing into our district to for our students to make Verona so much better. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Okay, so then we're going to go on to your report. So Mrs. Giuseppe, okay, your report. So thank you.
Okay. Some, starting out with some really exciting news for two of our students and Mrs. Ho, the Mandarin teacher at the high school. The New Jersey Chinese Cultural Studies Foundation each year puts on a cultural project contest. And this year, I'm very proud to say that Angela Odell and Lucia Grant, two 10th graders at the high school in Mandarin Three, elected to participate in that contest. And it's a research type team based project on history and facts. They were given an opportunity to begin their research back in January and work on it as a team, culminating with a presentation for a panel of judges at Seton Hall University on on April second. And our students took second place. So very exciting. And Mrs. Ho asked, gave me some words of wisdom from her, so I'm going to share. She says that Angelina and Lucia are very enthusiastic about Chinese culture and language. Their very informative project was well received by the audience. The whole process demonstrated their good study habits, self-discipline and willingness to try new things. She is very proud of their achievement and would like to share the joy with us. So congratulations to Angela and Lucia. Mrs. Paul Marisi and I attended a really very interesting behavioral threat assessment workshop on Tuesday. This is a new law requiring that all schools in every, all schools in each district establish a threat assessment team. So basically, threat, the purpose of a threat assessment team is to provide school teachers, administrators and other staff with assistance in identifying students with behavioral concerns, assessing the student's risk for engaging in violence or other harmful activities, and delivering intervention strategies to manage the risk of harm for students who pose a potential safety risk. So we, they started training um school administrators and teachers and child psychologists, et cetera, uh, around the state in September and they're continuing, continuing through the end of the year. We need to have our uh threat assessment teams up and running uh for September 2023. Um, we haven't, we, we have a good number of people that uh did do the training as well. I did it, Mrs. Paul Marisi did it, and Mr. Merkler did it as the three-school safety specialists that we have in the district. And then Mr. Cogdill and Mr. Lancaster also took part in the training, Mr. Lancaster on Tuesday, Mr. Cogdill, uh, Cogdill previously. In addition, I was, um, I actually postponed mine. I, I changed the date, but Mrs. Paul Marisi was able to attend the Comprehensive Active Shooter Incident Management for Schools workshop on Tuesday. Um, and that is uh in response to some of what we've witnessed over the past several years with an increase in um shootings, not just in schools, but across other venues as well. So um, we did get some email and I did uh indicate to parents that I would bring it to the board's attention. I would say probably in the neighborhood between eight and 10 uh community members and, and um that have asked whether or not we plan on uh engaging uh with school security officer, officers. I know Cedar Grove just hired um armed security guards. I would, if we even entertain this, I would uh entertain a class three officer for reasons that the class three officers are actually part of the Verona Police Department. They work in the schools. They can only make arrests and, and, and discharge their duties on school property. However, um, they are required under the law to receive all of the safety and um firearms training that a, a regular police officer would take part in during uh each year. However, having said that, in order for us to um put a school security officer in each of our schools is uh startup cost would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000. And that would be um at the current going rate of about $35 an hour for a class three officer. Um, they are considered part-time. They work full days, but they're only 180 days of work. So over the course of the year, it's a part-time employee. And they are retired police officers, so they would not require um health benefits. Um, he, here's the, the, the difficulty in, um, that would not be something our budget would ever allow us to do in one shot. So we would have to have a second question. However, um, if a second question is not supported by a majority of the community, um, we can never use district, district funds to add that, those positions in. So that poses a problem if we have to keep going back out to the community to find out whether or not the community is eventually going to support that or not support that. And that would be an increased tax levy on, on the community. Additionally, to do that for next year, we would have to amend our budget um by August and present that public question to the Department of Education. And then it would go on a vote for the following November, which means they wouldn't even be available to be hired until January 1. So it's complicated, more complicated than I knew of. I know your kindergarten second question went down once, right? Couple of times? So you were unable to add full day K until the gov- until the community said yes to that. So there's a risk. So uh, in the um, was it facilities or finance? I can't remember. We talked about potentially maybe sending out a survey to poll the community to see their feelings. Because I, like I said, there's, it's been between eight and 10 people that have reached out. And out of 2,200 students, that's a small percentage of people that are reaching out to me. But I did, I did say that I would bring it up for discussion tonight. So as part of my report, that can generate any discussion we might have. And the climate survey, uh, we've been getting really great response from staff, which is uh cool, because I want to, I want to know how they feel. And uh, parents are responding and we did postpone the student survey by one week just to make sure that our staff um knew what it looked like so they could support our students in, in disseminating it to them. The staff did receive the directions today and we'll start student um uh surveys next week, early next week. And I'm excited to see um what the results are. So we can't peek now because the minute you open the results, it closes the survey. So we have to be patient. And that's a, that's for, you know, validity reasons. And I did hear from Dr. Grip uh from statistical forecasting with regard to the demographic report. Apparently, uh, we don't have a planning board secretary at the township right now. So he's been struggling to get information from them specifically about the new um uh, building that's happening, the new uh plans, housing plans. Um, he did reach out to Mr. Diarco, who gave him Mr. Neil's contact. So we're waiting for that information. He's hoping to get uh the report done uh by the second week of May. That's my report. Oh, and strategic planning tomorrow, tomorrow night? No, not tomorrow night. What, Thursday night? Thursday night, um, I did put out something to the community today and hopefully we'll get some more people, even if so it's the last meeting. If you're interested, it's going to be a fun night. Well, I don't know about fun, but interesting.
I have a quick question on the demographic study. One of the questions is, would they be able to pull the information on how many of our properties in Verona now are receiving pilot money and how many students live in those properties? So we would have a real data on that.
Yeah, I, you know, and, and that's a good question. So um, I, I believe they will. What they're preparing for me is a, a map of the, of the community and where each student is located on a map. So seeing, knowing which um complexes were, are receiving pilot money, I would be able to see the number of students in those complexes. So the answer to that is yes. So we'll wait and see on that as well.
So I have, I have a question regarding the, the security officers. For me, I would be something, this would be something I would be 100% for. My question is, if this is something we were in favor of, is it something that would, we would amend the budget for now and it would go on for this November? And then if it was voted yes on, change in Janu- in this January?
So if that's what the board wants us to do, that the board would charge us to making that happen? Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know. How much is involved in the, in the budget amendment?
So I, I did, um, so the, as far as the amendment, um, uh, the county office uh did say that I, I, and this, it, it will be actually too late. It will actually have to take place now, um, before May. Uh, I believe it's May 9th. Uh, so, so that, that's, that's the only thing is that, is if that's something uh they, they kind of like, were like, because it's already approved, they wanted to hear from that. But if it's something that the board definitely wants to do, then we might have to do a special board meeting or actually our next board meeting is on May 9th. And that will be something that we will have to take action and then um have the county superintendent's support to be able to uh make that change and add that second question.
Are any obligation that we would need to do? Like, I think this passes in Verona, no matter when you ask it. But I really do. But I don't, I think it's more likely to pass if we put this on uh a May election date or a, a June election date. Because I think it's going to be more of the parents that, that come out to the polls in those days. Just something to consider. Um, but are, are we, is this an obligation that has to be on November ballot or can any of those five ballot dates be usable?
I don't know. And that's a good question. We can find out unless you know.
So I think um, uh, just a colleague of mine, they actually switched their school districts, which from November elections to that, um, that June election because of that, because of the second question. They didn't want to wait until January and uh to be, because the school year starts September. It makes more sense having a, that June election and then being able to implement and, and actually start your budget July 1 and support the school year. But that, that change will have to be done. Um, I, I, I will have to find out. It will have to be done. Um, the board will have to elect to switch their election from November to April, but it won't take effect this year. It'll be the next uh board year.
And, and in doing that, you go from a five-member vote on the budget to a community vote on the budget.
Right.
So there's, there's a, there's a.
Can I just ask a question?
I think questions have to be on June, in November. I'm pretty sure any questions have to be on.
Unless you're in April, unless you're in April, um, election, right, which.
Has the, has Chief Keenan or anyone from the police off, uh, police department weighed in on the need for um armed security at the schools?
Um, not weighed in on it. We, when I spoke to um the officers coming on in, in July, um, they indicated, listen, they're going to be in support of, of more security. Um, but they were ambivalent about whether or not it was class three officers or armed security. Now, Chief and I had a conversation about that and he just said, you know, wouldn't I, wouldn't I rather have them report to me? And I said, no, I'm not a, I'm not a, I'm not a, you know.
I, I mean, I'm, as much as, as Ms. Briscoe says she's for it, I am absolutely 100% against it. If you look at school shootings, school mass shootings, going all the way back to Columbine, the vast majority of those schools had armed security. They had it. They had them right there and they did not do anything. So to bring in armed security into our schools, I am opposed to that. When you bring in armed security, you also start criminalizing students. There's a higher rate of students getting arrested at school. There's a higher rate of black, brown and disabled students getting arrested at schools. It, it impacts the school-to-prison pipeline. So now we're going to be making things that would have been a trip to the principal's office or a trip to see Dr. De Giuseppe and a, a Mr. De Giuseppe on a, a big note into being arrested. We've all seen the um, the surveys, we, I'm sorry, the reporting and the literature that comes out of I'm sorry, it's just, it's, it's just not the right decision. And I speak as a, as a, a parent of a black child, I would not be comfortable in the, in this school with her having armed security officers around. It's just not what we need. There's no, in fact, there is a study that there are more school shootings at schools that have armed security because of suicide by cop, because the people who are committing these acts of horrific atrocity are trying to die in the process. So they're going to a school where they're more likely to get shot. You know, you, you know, you look at, at what happened in Florida, you look at what happened. There was, there was nothing that stopped them. What's going to stop a school shooting in Verona is that people don't leave the door open. Is that people don't wave their friends in, is that we log every person in and out of this building? Every time, every way. I don't care if I'm going in with my kid, I still need to log in. And that's what's going to keep us safe. And that's what's going to keep our kids safe. Not, not a retired police officer. And I, and I have, my, my brother-in-law is a retired New York City police officer. He, he was, he was injured in the line of duty. And he would tell me, he would say the same thing that I'm saying. You don't want armed police officers, retired or not, in your school. So as I don't think, I, I don't agree with Mr. Walker that I, that I think this would be a slam dunk pass. Because I think there are enough people in town that feel more like me um, that we just do not need this because it's just, it's like the TSA at the airport. It's window dressing. It's window dressing. That's what it is. It's not actual safety. So I, I would rather invest that money in better better cameras, in better surveillance, in better programming, in reeducating our staff and our students and our community on safety measures going in and out of the building. So.
Yeah, so I'm obviously respectful of commissioner's opinion on this. And I agree about the TSA part. Um, but as far as, you know, I hire a class three who reports to me where I work and I hire a, I don't hire, uh, we, we pay for the services of an SRO who doesn't report to me, uh, but is a, the municipal employee. I've never had anything but positive. Um, the, I think the, the class three benefit of it to employ of the district, then they have to take directives from, you know, the chief school administrator or where she delegates. You know, a class two, um, I've only ever had positive experiences with the Verona police. Uh, but the problem with SRO is like, I don't, that would be way too expensive like that. I don't think we could ever do that. So I think it would have to be class three. You know, it's a kind of thing too, you know, the perhaps I'm right or perhaps I'm wrong about what the community would, would feel about it. Um, you know, that's, that's why we would have an election. So if, if it went that far, it's something that I personally would support and I would respect people who disagree.
I um I, I, I appreciate that perspective. You know, I think that, a- again, if we did consider the class three officers, I think that there would have to be very specific, like anything else, descriptions as to what their role is. And when having anything to do with discipline with children and things of that nature, I don't see that as being a role at all of a class three officer, but still remaining a role of administration in the building. Um, so I think that those things would have to definitely be discussed and um hear those perspectives and have clear descriptions. I also think that um, you know, a conversation with Chief Keenan would be appropriate and important to have so that we can get his opinion and his expertise. I'll always lean into any expert in the field. I'm not one. So I think that that would be um incredibly important to have that meeting with him for his input prior to really any, you know, moving on in any way.
So yeah, I can, I can invite Chief to, I mean, it's school security. We could actually do it in closed session, have a real, you know, um, a conversation which we speak about what we currently do for school security, which we can't do here. Um, I can invite him to our next confidential and, and have him speak to it. You know, I, I can speak to my experience. Um, and again, my former district was very different diversity-wise than this district. I didn't, our chief of police in Kinnalan actually hired and they reported to, but they deferred to me. They were good. I, I do think if you hire really good officers, you're, you don't necessarily have those problems, although I know they exist. I was very lucky in that we had officers that were supportive of our kids and made relationships with our kids. And they were also trained as SROs, even though they were not SROs. They went to SRO training. And I think they understood the, the importance of a good um police student relationship. Um, but that's not true of everywhere, right? So I see what you're saying and, and uh respect your opinion and, and your facts that you bring to us. It's a hard, it, it is a hard question because, you know, I often felt, you know, in, in our building there, we had three floors in the high school. If the one officer was up in the back and someone came in the front, there's, they're getting in, right? I mean, I hate even talking about this, by the way. But so there, there's nothing that's foolproof, right? So you're right that the, our best defense right now is to make sure we're knowing who's in our buildings, keeping the doors closed, knowing the protocols, knowing, you know, practicing our drills and making sure that everyone's familiar to what to do, when, and how to carry it out. And then we can continue this conversation.
Terms of the uh, if, if we could look at local election then, because I believe this board used to be a May, a May vote because, right, I got sworn in, there was still language that said May. If, if we could review what the, what the voter turnout was in a, a typical May election in Verona versus the voter turnout is for a, a non-May election, I'd be interested to have that information.
It was 25% last May election, 25% um in 2020. I don't have 2022, 20, 2020, it was like 75%, but that was a presidential year.
Yeah.
Yes, that was a presidential.
And there was a lot of vote by mail.
Right, and there was a lot of vote by mail that year. Um, it's somewhere, I think, I want to say it was around 60% for a typical November.
We did that, so I'm understanding. Then we'd have to do everything in, and then that, whatever the current budget would be, would also have to be for that year of a town-wide vote. That's the, okay, very good.
That's correct. And um, just if you recall what goes into, you know, selling a second question or a referendum, it doesn't give us much time to market and let people know what's happening. And you can, I can see by looking at the response to who opens my. And you can, I can see by looking at the response to who opens my parents' where emails. Only about, you know, 40% get open, so.
I think it would be like ad hoc to change it to a May, just for, I think we should stick with.
Cause I, I think we all, we all fully expect that this is not something we're going to see next year, or maybe not even the, the next, next year, right? Cause this is going to be a big project. But it's, you know, I, I would like to have that discussion in exact.
Yeah. Oh, geez. Every time I think it's closer than, it's further than it is. Every single time. Uh, yeah, when it comes to the discussion about an officer in the schools, my initial like instinct like is that I am hesitant about that. Obviously, the experts in the field know, know much more than I do. So I'd, what I'd really like to see from the board is, what I'd really like to see from the board is that we take, is that we, we take our time on this. We consider like, we consider the current climate of the district. We consider the current needs of the district, whatever the chief's telling us and other routes, other possible routes and measures before going fully forward with a security officer of some, any kind, really.
Part of the climate survey asks us, ask parents and students to give very specific answers about how safe they feel on the building, et cetera. So we'll get a sense of how many people do have a, a feeling of insecurity in, in our buildings.
I think it plays into what we were speaking about to our last meeting with some type of resolution based on firearm safety and education. Because it all ties together is educating our students, our staff, our community members on safety awareness, what to do in the presence of a firearm.
And yeah, oh, sorry, I got like a one more. So the threat assessment team. So what would the role of the threat assessment team be like in conjugation with like guidance? In conjugation with student well-being? Like, what would that presence look like?
So that's a really great question. So I'm going to give you a scenario that might help explain it. So the threat behavioral threat assessment team is going to be different depending on the school district makeup. But most often it's building principal, building district administration. Usually guidance counselors, teachers that's, that see all kids. So maybe the media specialist in the elementary or an art teacher that sees all of the students. School child study team members and mental health professionals that are in our buildings. And so let's say we have a student that does a, an essay that in the essay, they make a comment like, you know, that person that, that school shooter in such and such got a lot of fame. It, it would be interesting to see whether I would get that kind of fame. So that's not, and that's not a threat. That wouldn't be something that I would call the Verona police on because that would not be a specific threat. It's a kind of a wondering in a writing. And, but that would possibly trigger, this is interesting. So that's, we, we would start by convening the behavioral threat team. And they would just start gathering information. Is this, does this student have a history of other dark thoughts or dark want, wonderings? Is there a history of, of risk assessment self-injury to themselves? And then they would come together and look at all of the pieces and of, of information that they could find and make a determination. Is this something, do we need to send this child for a real risk assessment outside of the school? Or was this just this, an essay? That really was not specific to anything, nor was, is there going to be an action on this? And that was kind of a light example, but you can imagine that there are other things that kids say and do. Is that they would make a determination because we know you can't profile of school violence. They don't look a certain way or act a certain way for the most part. But you can, and there are characteristics that are where students are more prone to school violence and that very often is depression, isolation, feelings of loneliness, fear. So that kind of information would be gathered about the student or students that are involved in that internally, rather than just calling the police and having the police come out and do an investigation. So it's, it's an intervention. And say we do find that that student is struggling with isolation, depression, anxiety. Then we would intervene and provide support. Whether it's out, out of district support, in district support, in school counseling, but to try to assist that student with those feelings. So it's looking at threat from a behavioral perspective, but also with an eye on providing support and help.
Question. Do we currently, or I should say, how do we, I would imagine we do in some way, but support our students in recognizing what could be threats or what is, you know, upsetting behaviors, particularly in social media or text chains? And then at what age do we usually start that?
That's a good question. I'm going to say we should be, but I don't know, but I will check with the principals and Dr. Miller to see. That should be part of our health curriculum. It should also be part of our stranger danger curriculum and not just stranger danger, but just if you see something, say something kind of instruction that we should be giving our students. So we should be, whether we are, that's not something that's come up yet in my nine months here.
That in itself, I think, is incredibly powerful because they are, for lack of a better term, on the front lines when it comes.
No, they are. Social media.
What they're viewing, their text chain, what they're seeing, what they're exposed to. And you know, I think that that would be something that, you know, even if it is written into a health curriculum, that would be something that should be cyclical almost where it's, it's constantly coming up and rather than that one unit because, you know, I think it takes a lot of, it's a lot of touch points for anyone to really kind of take something in. And I think that I would, I would hope and I, pray for our kids, our children to know that if they report something, they're not in trouble for it. If it's on a text chain, you know, that they are not going to be in trouble if it's on that chain. Cause I would imagine that, you know, I know from my own experience, like students get scared to report something like that because they're on the text chain too. So.
And that's another question that the behavioral threat assessment team would look into. Did, does this child have at least one adult that they confide in, can trust regularly? I will say though, in the several occasions this year that we've had social media stuff that was perceived as being threatening, it has been from other students that have brought it to our attention.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions? Ms. Hado, you're up next for your student report. Thank you.
Uh, yeah. So starting, so been putting out notice for the upcoming strategic planning meetings, submitting an announcement script, posting on social media. So that's coming up. Informed by admin that the Verona High School students will be taking the New Jersey Student Climate Initiative Survey tomorrow, I believe. Yeah, tomorrow morning, that'll be put out to students during homeroom. There's time set aside within the school day. So teacher support with teacher, teachers are resources within the room for that as well. So that'll be put out tomorrow at the high school level. Next week, AP testing begins at VHS, starting May 1st and will continue for the next two weeks. The week after that, starting May 15th and continuing through May 19th is NJ SLA Science Testing for ninth and 11th grade. On April 27th, I believe it's 7:30 PM, the jazz band will be performing. And on, and this Friday, Girls Learn International will be hosting its basketball game. Proceeds from that will go towards charity. And May 5th, the Spotlight Players will run their annual one-act festival. That'll start at 7:00 PM. They'll be presenting six student-directed and in some cases, student-written plays. So yeah. Uh, that's it for me.
Thank you. At least, you know what, is that game at four o'clock? That basketball game? Is that the staff and student game?
That is the staff and student game, yes.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? As always, thank you very much. We're going to go on to our committee reports. We have education.
So Ed Committee met late yesterday. It was a long one. Actually due to me because I am long-winded, but that's okay. Um, the next Child CPAC meeting is Thursday, May 11th. If anyone is interested in joining, I believe that is usually done hybrid, but I can't swear to that. I'm no longer that, they are hybrid. There you go. So that's a great opportunity. If you have a, a student or think you even have a student who needs special services, it's, it's a nice meeting to attend. The preschool, the transition to find my things, not that. Your, the transition from preschool to kindergarten. The assessments are underway and parents are finding out. Special education program, we talked a little bit about the life skills program. Again, that's starting, they're, they're looking for space. They, they may have found something and then extended school year letters have been gone, have gone out. Effective School Solutions is being transitioned to Care Plus. Those transition has started to occur. In general ed, AP exams are taking place in the next few weeks, the first two weeks of May. There are currently 298 students scheduled to take 560 AP exams. Good luck to everybody. I remember those and they were not fun. We currently just, in general, we currently have somewhere between, we have 22 or 23 AP courses being offered this school year. So. And then we, we discussed a little bit of the electives because surveys have gone out and, and students have made their request for next year. We just, we did have a little discussion about the policy about how many students we need to, to, to run a class. We want to make sure that we're not, you know, right now it's about, it's a minimum of 10 students. Just so that everyone knows, you know, if it's less than 10, it likely will not run. There's going to be new New Jersey learning standards rolling out from the Department of Education for English Language Arts and Math. We don't know how we're going to have to implement those, hopefully not all at once, because that would be a lot. So we're hoping for a staggered implementation. But we, we're not sure yet. The Atlas Curriculum Mapping Program. They are starting to work through that. They're currently working on the Understanding by Design Curriculum Template, which will be implemented this school year. They also, there was a mention that we're going to have a plan for all new K through four staff trained in letters to support the new learning standards in ELA, because we expect those to be more phonics focused. Well, there we go. They, they will be more phonics focused. So we need to make sure our elementary school teachers are able to teach that. The DEI committee work is still continuing. We're working towards a, a statement, a DEI statement using the compass points that was recommended by Ken Shelton. Uh, New Jersey NJ SLA Testing is next week for grades three through 11. And then in terms of recruiting for new teachers, Dr. Miller and Ms. Peter and Mr. Stevenson had, or some combination thereof, went and visited College of New Jersey, William Patterson, Monmouth University, Montclair and Rider. They are also advertising Star Ledger and NJ.com. We did discuss a little bit, given the teacher shortage overall, perhaps the need to extend the net a little bit. You know, looking perhaps at programs, education programs in the SUNY system or Temple University or Delaware State University, which is actually a historically black college. So that could also be nice to have some diversity among the staff. A strategic planning meeting is Thursday. And let's see, we talked a little bit about professional development. Tom Marshall, the Literacy Leaders Network met with alongside, met with Brookdale staff alongside Ms. Stu, I'm never going to say her name, Studo and Dr. Lanza. I, I see all the vowels and I get and Ms. Peter to discuss lab site demonstration lessons. And then in terms of gifted and talented, we did talk a little bit about the budget, that there was a budget for a part-time teacher and kind of a, a more conceptual conversation about, you know, what, what is this going to look like? Do, so hopefully we'll get more information as, as the school year gets underway in September. And then it's AAPI Month in May, starting next week. Grades K through four will participate in the Love Your Lunch Initiative. Thanks to AAPI Montclair, who gave us a, a nice donation of books. And there's going to be a, a conversations around the importance of literacy and just, and they use lunch as kind of the base for these conversations so that we can discuss differences and similarities in what things taste good and what things people like. And then there's a little art project at the end where everyone draws their favorite lunch. My kids would be chicken nuggets all the way, but so, but that's really, did I miss anything? I got everything? Okay. More questions, comments?
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
A quick little comment. The love you, the Love Your Lunch Initiative, that's adorable. I love that. That's fantastic. I love that. That's.
I think it's great. You know, I was, it would be, I, listen, I, I don't get too involved in school lunches. But it'd be great if there were maybe some representation, like during AAPI Month, maybe we have some culturally diverse foods that are Asian-focused and we can move along that way. But it's just, you know, it's nice.
Thank you very much. Facilities. I'm assuming Mr. Walker, you're going to take that one since Mrs. Freshy doesn't have a voice this evening.
Sure, but Commissioner Brazil's correct. I actually told our food service provider that as often as they can legally provide us with chicken nugget day, like everyone's going to be happy on those days. So we do it quite a bit. So good news, the forest ab driveway replacement and railing repair has been completed. The landing ab roofing repair over special needs classrooms and kindergarten classrooms has been completed. The district did a district-wide fire alarm repairs, which is awesome, and environmental testing, which they need to get done each year. They did that. It looks like during break. So thank you for that. I think this is a really smart plan, the routes of egress plan. So a lot of times when you go to like more modern buildings, you'll, you'll see on the wall where the nurse's office might be or if there's an emergency, what your direction out should be or where the, the AED distributor is. It looks like we don't have that in, to the extent that we need to have it in a lot of our classrooms. So I think that's a smart thing. And plus, you know, we, we lease out it, not lease, but we rent out our building for organizations to use on the weekends when we're not using that. So we want to make sure that people that aren't familiar here will know what to do. If there was ever an emergency, it's good for our kids as well. They're going to install time clocks in, not for teaching staff, but for the custodial staff so that we know when everybody's coming and going, just to be better, you know, have a better understanding of, you know, the hours everyone's working and where they're working. Cause that's part of the, the study that Jorge had mentioned before about the custodians. Let's see. We talked about, Jorge had mentioned before about a, looking to get a, a vendor to come in who specializes on what the appropriate personnel for, of maintenance of a district our size with our need should be. We asked how much it would be and it looks like it's at most, the, the study will be $5,000. So over a $43 million budget. That's just a small percentage. So we, I think Lisa and I both agreed that that was something that we wanted to support. Let's see. The district's waiting to complete and code repairs and update the fire alarms and, and multiple. So Jorge, is that finished or? Cause we, so it has been finished. Okay. So it says here awaiting approval. So, so make sure I'm, I'm reading it correctly. We talked about the, the custodians and the overtime costs. Big news, we're going to have bigger cleaning machines in the, in the high school, which will be faster and people could write on them now. So Reese, good times are coming. So they put out some proposals for these big cleaning equipment you could write on and Jorge is going to give us a demonstration. So they put out some proposals for these big cleaning equipments you could write on and Jorge is going to give us a demonstration when they get it. Let's see, and then in the Verona High School, it's being proposed for the the new flooring in the bathroom and a privacy divider and also in the sick room. So that would be the nurse's office and then in the faculty room, which I was just in before, to freshen and update the faculty rooms. So those are two projects the district's looking to do. So Lisa or Jorge, did I miss anything? And you can really write on these equipments?
We're, we're actually, we're actually going towards, the ride-on is a little more expensive, so there's another one, it's a chariot. Chariot. Yeah, so chariot, it's a little more affordable and it does, it does the same thing as a ride-on, he's got to stand. So I just said, like, I like to see them, I actually like to stand. So I did tell Henry, let's get them chariot, they could stand, work and be efficient and, and so the, the other update with that is that we're, we're only going to purchase one unit now.
So they can't race?
Yeah. And then the other one, and we do have some walk-behinds here at the high school, so those are going to go on to the other schools and make their way around the district. So we're definitely going to see a lot more cleaner floors and they, partly most likely daily mopping of the floors and you'll, you'll see a big difference with those equipment. Sounds good.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? I would like to say, I'm happy to see that, I think, hopefully all the leaks are going to be fixed now from our roofs, from the referendum roofs are fixed. Okay.
So, so yeah, so just, just to add to that, the referendum, I would say the referendum only did about 70% of our roofs. And then, so any, any leaks that's related to the replacement from the referendum, those are under warranty. So we always check in with Tremco, which is the contractor that actually did the work and they subcontracted some of that workout. So whenever we have that and we identified an area and we look at our plan and say, okay, you know, this was a Tremco replacement, it does get replaced and repaired on the warranty. The ones that, where, so the, the most recent example was the Lanning Avenue School, which this, this one vendor actually quoted, I think the repair was 120,000, which will consume a big chunk of our, our facilities budget and that. So we did go out and, and obtain additional proposals for a fraction, I believe a third of that proposal. We, we actually had another vendor go out to Lanning and since I've been here, I remember my first visit to that classroom, there was actually the teachers and the, and the aides in that classroom had these little tupperware containers catching the drips and the rain was the, the day before and the drift was still coming in. So we're, I'm glad that we're finally, the, the principal actually confirmed that there's actually hasn't been any leaks, any drips. So we're happy to hear that. And then we're prioritizing anything like that, that's causing substantial damage, water damage, that we're addressing that and, and it's being taken care of. So Mr. Bagalari, he's actually doing a phenomenal job and, and following up on the work orders and anything that's really that's tremendous to facilities and upkeeping our buildings.
Thank you. Next, onto finance. Thank you. Okay, um, so we had a heavy finance day today with the budget, so that was officially approved, know that. We did have an opportunity to meet with our rep, Tony from Brown and Brown, and he provided the fiscal analysis. Did, do we, I think everybody has. You, okay, so every, every board member will have a copy of the report that we received. And again, much of it was what we've already discussed with the, with the increase and where he shopped around. There was, we know that the budget was approved by county. We discussed the recommended 5 to 10% increase for out-of-district tuition. And the recommendation was made that we would increase it by 10% because at the moment we have a, one of the lowest really out-of-district in surrounding areas. But we said that we recommended grandfathering, grandfathering in any teachers who currently pay out-of-district tuition, right? They get the 20% and we would keep that fee of the current, that wouldn't be increased for current, for current teachers. We are looking at a potential one-time cost of $5,450 for a system upgrade fee for equipment across the district, which would ultimately save us about $180 a month. So Jorge, I think it's just exploring that, that option. We currently use open systems integration for fire alarms and we're thinking about potentially bundling that for the upgrade. Let's see. Mr. Cruz did confirm the 16% increase for New Jersey School Board Association. The last increase was 14 years ago, so while the increase does seem very heavy in light of the fact that it was 14 years in the making, it makes more sense. And then the other discussions that we had really were all of the finances aligned to the BNG report that, that Chris just, that Mr. Walker just reported out on, and that was, and that was it.
Quick question, in regards to tuition students, how much revenue does that generate? Many, aside from our teachers who have their children here, do we have?
It generates about $50,000, $50,000 and that's also with, to our staff, they get a substantial discount. So they, they basically get an 80% discount on that rate. They only cover 20 and then the recommendation to board is to keep the, the current staff grandfather at the current rate that they're in. So they won't receive that increase.
Most tuition students coming at the high school.
Going HBW, that's correct.
And this had roll-in from OLL or, or outside districts or? Really? Nice. Thank you.
Have we ever explored or is there capacity to bring in students from other districts into? I mean, we have, we're just starting an LLC program in the high school, but I know sometimes other districts will send and we receive tuition dollars from that. Obviously, the students of the home district take priority over anyone coming in. But I'm just wondering if that's, I don't think, ever been explored as?
It has, and I don't think we have any current special education tuition students. We did have a request that we could not accommodate because of spacing at Lanning, so, but Mrs. Simmons will put this program forth at her roundtable meeting, letting other districts know we will be adding a high school program in LLC, which is not an 18 to 21 program, which is what is around us. So this might attract students into our district. I don't know whether they'll make a move the first year that want to see the program first, but that's something we definitely could do.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments? Moving on to our agenda, we're going to open up to public comments on agenda action items. Seeing there's no one here, we will move on to discussion items. Does anyone have any discussion items? This is a long meeting, but I just, we all received probably today the unsung heroes for those in support staff. I think that would be incredible. Glad you're the best. That's great. Yeah, thank you. I just want to, there was one thing I wanted to bring up, I mentioned driving up Sampson. The other day I was coming up for the baseball game and I noticed, I think, I'm assuming, I think it was Mr. Merkler and maybe Mr. Cogdo that purchased the new.
Banners are up, yes.
Yes, and the new sign going into the parking lot, I don't know if anyone else took notice of it, but it really looks, it looks really nice. It says, you know, welcome to Verona High School, home of the hillbillies. And then there's the new banners that are up, going up Sampson and then there's the new flag. So I, were they the ones that?
They were the ones we talked about earlier in the year, they.
So it looks really nice. So thank you to them and whoever else was involved in that.
The signs, the signs been up for about a month, but the banners just been up last week.
They look really nice. So that looks great. So thank you. Anyone else?
Well, that, that thing you, you wrote to all the board members about the gun resolution, did, did you write that edited or? Yeah, because the, the second, third and fourth resolved, like to me, they seem reasonable. I just, the first res, the first resolved, it's still saying that you're going to send explanations out to parents and tell them of what their legal obligations are about gun storage. And I, I thought Ms. Brazil made a good point about like, that, it's you giving legal advice to someone, that's, that's not your job. And it's not even our board attorney's job. Yeah, the whereas are mostly statements of fact, like this is just something with the resolve is what the district's going to do. Oh, your microphone's off, he said.
All right, thank you. It's like when you're muted on Zoom after four years of using Zoom. Oh, am I muted? So yeah, what I, I think we certainly could create a letter to be sent to parents and guardians explaining the importance of secure firearms storage, but you're, you, I agree with you, the legal obligations is not up to me to tell them their legal obligations. So we can edit that.
When we're thinking about the second even, right, to continue to address gun safety, including how students should respond if they come across a firearm. Again, I think possibly when we meet with Chief, Chief Kiernan or in a separate meeting, we can get his input on what that looks like.
Looks like, yeah.
Yeah. It falls into what you said earlier about see something, say something. And I think that came up in the Grand Rivers Solutions. Because students, I think it was part of the student place and some of the comments of students, they didn't really know what that means. With see something, say something, to really define what is a threat and how do you report it?
And I, I'm not sure whether we want to change the word irresponsibly to improperly. I mean, it's up to you, it's just, yeah, I mean, well, I do too, but.
I just end the sentence after, that a letter that explains the importance of secure firearm storage, period.
I was going to leave to protect minors from accessing guns.
But would, wouldn't that also be part of that letter though, like?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So I'll do a track changes and send out the changes so you can see what it used to say.
Yes, could I get a link to?
Yeah, let me send it to you right now. Is that the only result, Chris, that was problematic?
Yeah, the other board members may have a different opinion, but for me, that was the one thing I thought we should change. But the other ones, at least my opinion seemed sensible. I, I think that no superintendent likes hearing, we're going to add to the curriculum because what gets taken out, nothing, right? So you might want to, we'll address gun, we'll look to address gun safety because we're, we don't even know if it's in the curriculum right now or where, we don't have it in, so like, you know, we'll look to do that. I think Commissioner Ferrera, you know, her point was strong about like, what, what do students know if they see something? So I think that's something that should stay. And I think the, where such instruction is appropriate is, is a really good way to phrase that last part of that result.
Thank you. I could have just asked ChatGTP to write a form. I did one other one. It was great too, they did a great job. Yeah, I actually went to a workshop on superintendent's understanding of chat AI, it was very interesting.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other discussion items? Mr. Cruz, okay, Mr. Cruz. Resolution, okay, I need a motion to approve resolution number one. Motion by Ferrara, seconded by Mrs. Brazella. Any discussion? Mr. Cruz, can you call?
Sure. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazil?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve resolutions 1.1 through 1.6. Removed, motion by Mrs. Brazella, seconded by Mrs. Prisco. Any discussion? Mr. Cruz, can you call?
Yes, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazil?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve education's resolution 1.1 through. It's just 1.1. Motion by Mrs. Farrar, seconded by Mrs. Brazella. Any discussions?
Just in the spirit of, you know, special, the goal of education, special education or to, to, to include each other. So maybe we could consider having under education, special education and education under one, one, whatever the Roman numeral. In the future.
Education.
It's all education, right?
Mr. Cruz, can you please call?
Sure.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazil?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve athletics co-curricular resolutions 1.1 through 1.1.12. Seconded by Mrs. Farrar, I'm like fumbling.
I, I just have a comment before we go. The Statue of Liberty trip, I am so glad to see that back. That is the best trip. It really is. I actually had to take my kids back a second time because they wanted to see more, so.
Mrs. Carrina, that's her favorite place.
Do we do special education?
Yeah, we did. That's when we said we were going to.
Okay. Yes, so special education, right, and the education, right? So.
I think, I think we skipped special education.
I think we said that in the future, let's look to put them under one item.
We did, I think.
Okay.
We get to go back.
I'll go back and do it. Okay, we did skip special.
I think so.
Let's do it again.
All right, so let's, but let's.
I'm moving.
Let's finish, let's finish athletics. We didn't vote on that yet. Can you call a roll for athletics?
Repeat the motion, who was?
Sure. Seconded by Mrs. Brazella. All in favor, I mean, vote.
Mr. Walker?
He's getting crazy, yes.
Mrs. Brazil?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to approve special education 1.1.
I already moved it.
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mrs. Razzella. Any discussion? No. Mr. Cruz, can you call a role?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Razzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Now we're going to go on to finance and I need a motion to approve resolution. One.
One through four.
One through four.
So moved.
Seconded by.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Cruz?
Sure. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Razzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I need a motion to approve facilities, which is resolutions one through two. Motion by.
I'll move it.
Seconded by. Any discussion? Mr. Cruz?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Razzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve governance resolutions one. Motion by.
First. Oh, yeah, I have, I'm still working.
Seconded by Mrs. Farrar. Any discussion? Mr. Cruz?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Razzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Now on to addendums. I need a motion to approve personnel resolution one to 1.1. Motion by.
Motion, so moved.
Mr. Walker, seconded by, oh, second, Mrs. Razzella. Any discussions? Mr. Cruz?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Razzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve finance, I need resolutions. One. Motion for finance. Motion by Mrs. Farrar, seconded by.
I'm second.
Mrs. Razzella. Any discussion?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Razzella? Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Especially we didn't do public comment. We don't have any public.
Yes.
We didn't do public comment today.
Public comment, seeing none. We are going to officially adjourn the meeting. It is 8:59. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April 27th, 2023, for a special meeting at 7:00 PM in the Verona Learning Commons.